Thank you. I should be unmuted now.
You are. Thanks for coming. Just waiting for Jim to come back online.
He's sending me stuff, I think.
I am back. I sent it to you, but it looks like you got there before me, Ronnie.
I did. I managed to. I think I probably have. I might be in your waiting room three times. So anyway. Thank you.
All right, ready to get started, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, apologize for the slight delay, but this is our first Zoom meeting, everybody. So welcome to the virtual Selectmen's meeting for July 14th. Not in the Selectmen's chambers, we're online. All of us are remote. I'll call the meeting to order. Okay, a roll call, please.
Don Klein, present.
Veronica Cowell, present.
Wayne Miller, present. Excuse me. I'm going to waive the Pledge of Allegiance because I don't have a flag in the house. So we'll just jump right into it. I will announce that this meeting is being broadcast on Zoom and recorded virtually. So this is our first one. This is kind of a tryout with this. So participants are going to be muted unless directed by Jim. So he's the host, he's in control, and the chat feature will be on offline today for that. So we're working on that. So there's a couple of IT things we've got to work through as far as getting that ready to go. So Chairman's additions, deletions, I have none. Jim, I'm not aware of any. Oh, actually, I do have one. I'm sorry. Karen asked me to announce that Donna Howard is celebrating her 20th year service as the Transportation Administrator, Lead Van Driver for the COA. She's been on board since 7/18/2000. So this is her 20th year this week. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations for your service.
Excellent.
Other than that, other than that, John or Jim, I don't see anything else.
Nope. Should be good.
Okay, no appointments, meeting business, none. We're just going to jump right into the work session. So Town Administrator Report, Review Approved Fiscal Year 21 Budget. So Jim, take it away.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Had a meeting with the Finance Committee last Thursday night, which was obviously after our meeting on Tuesday, two nights earlier. Went over a couple of questions that members of the Finance Committee had regarding the budget. Chief Sartell was in attendance. He's here with us this evening as well. And he was able to answer any questions that members of the Finance Committee had. And without speaking for the Finance Committee, those that were in attendance did respond favorably to his proposed structure for the PD going forward. Excellent. I do have the share screen ability here to be able to put the budget up. So I don't know if your preferences, I share that document and just anticipate questions and go line by line with the document, or if you'd rather just do it verbally and pull the document up only if necessary. But I guess I would defer to you, Don and Veronica.
I would prefer screen sharing to see the document.
I think that would be best just because we'll be on the same page and not looking at three different documents ourselves. So.
You got it. So I will put up the version of the budget that I emailed to FinCom and Selectmen on Thursday night, the last. So everybody should have that document in front of them now. Is that showing for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Excellent. I can figure out how to get our faces out of the corner to be better, but hi, thumbnail video. All right, so you want to go right to questions, folks, or you want to the brief dog and pony show? I mean, we've had it a couple of different times over the last month, but.
I do the dog and pony show first. Since last, we talked last week, we're $92,000 out of whack, and now this is balanced, if I understand it correctly.
That is correct.
So I give the highlights of what was taken, not taken out, but not put on. And just reiterate that this is a temporary budget.
I think you just did. Good point. Just for people that haven't been following along that are with us right now, this is the best effort at a balanced budget, given the data that we have. Specifically, the state hasn't passed a budget yet. They're indicating that they're not going to have a budget passed until probably late fall, maybe even into early winter. And where that's about a million and a half dollars worth of revenue just to the general government side, not to mention tens of millions for the school. We've got to have our eyes wide open to the fact that this is just, again, the best that we can do, given the data that we have. Where, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? I was just curious, did ASH be passed the school budget as well as Pepperell?
They did.
Okay.
So the school budget, when we get to that line pursuant to the school district agreement, if two of the three communities pass the budget, then the budget is a go. The third community, notwithstanding what they may feel, are brought into the mix as having been party to the budget as presented. So we do have that final number in this budget, and we are balanced against that number. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
As Wayne said, this time a week ago, we were hovering at around $90,000 out of balance. The budget that's before you in this document, as we go through it, you'll see that several adjustments were made in the Board of Selectmen Town Administrators section. There had been under line 19 showing on your document, Education Training Contractual and Law, there had been a request in for an additional $10,000 that had been being carried until just last week. That's been backed out. So there's 10. You then take, when we get down to land use, the roughly $45,000 land use coordinator position and the associated $22,000 in benefit load has been taken out.
What line are you on?
If I get down to land use, it is going to be, a moment.
Because I'm not seeing it on my screen.
I was just giving the overview before I went to the.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll cruise down there. Don't anybody get motion sickness. I know I would be. Right here, land use administrator, line 218. So that $45,000, $45 position was zero. It's currently a vacant position. So while it clearly impacts service, it's not impacting a person as it's currently vacant. So that 45 plus, there was an associated $22,000 for a benefit load being carried. That has been taken out of. I will go to the bottom of the document. Thank goodness I got to do this this way. If you get down to line 436, of course, it jumped back up. I apologize, folks. As I'm scrolling to it, we did an actual survey of existing employees and families that are currently receiving health insurance as of the beginning of this fiscal year using the increased rates and determine what our 75% contribution as the municipality is. And then carried a number of positions that are currently budgeted but vacant and came to the number that you're about to see at line 836, That covers everybody that is currently employed and taking insurance. And unless there is a qualifying event between now and next year, they are as they are. No one's getting on. And obviously, somebody could get off, but that would just save money. The positions that are also included in that line that are currently funded but unfilled are two positions in the Police Department. One is the proposed lieutenant position, and one is the currently vacant administrative position to the chief. And then there is a maintenance tech position that is funded in this budget, but not yet filled. So there are three $22,000 numbers being carried in that 802, 344 line item. If somebody comes on to one of those positions, if they're to be filled and doesn't take health insurance, or takes an individual and not a family plan, then that line will be excess, but there is that additional in there. And then we get to the police budget. So I've got to go back up. Bear with me. In the police budget, we see a proposed lieutenant position. And given the timing that's going to be involved to bring that position on, if it's funded at town meeting, we're going to be a couple of months into the fiscal year. So what you see is a position that is funded at 10 months as opposed to the full year. And that is line number 316. So it is funded at 68, 989, which is roughly $10,000 less than the full request for the year.
So all those changes balance the budget essentially, in a nutshell.
They do. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to admit people that are in the waiting room.
And that's no layoffs, no cutbacks, correct?
No layoffs, no cutbacks. But in fairness, without the land use coordinator position being funded, even though there's no layoff that is going to impact service because that is a position that's been funded in the past where we were seeing productivity. The discussion that took place at the Finance Committee meeting, I thought was interesting, when there were some suggestions that the position as it is currently scoped may not be the best position for our community. Some discussion about combining it with more planning functions or better defined planning role and perhaps even grant writing. And I think it was Andrea Wood that made the recommendation that we spend this next couple of months looking at that job description, tailoring it the way we think in 2020, 21, it should be. And then when we have a better sense of what our funding looks like at a subsequent town meeting, consider whether it makes better sense to have that funded in a new and revised capacity than something else that's currently funded, or if there is a more clear revenue stream that we can picture that can afford to fund it in addition to what we've currently got proposed.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion as well, because just quite frankly, we haven't had a lot of bites on the position itself, either one of them, actually. So I think we take this, you know, two, three months, whatever it is, and go over the job descriptions and kind of build what we want based on what we know now and what we're looking for. So because that was, we really didn't look at that last year.
Right.
And Veronica, I heard you last week that that's something you're interested in. And I think we take this time to work on that and get that done. So when we have budget number two, we're well prepared to go over that.
I agree. I think that the land use coordinator might be a good place to roll that in.
I think it's fantastic. It's a perfect place for it.
So, yeah.
I'm in agreement with that, too, because, as you know, I've been a proponent of getting that grant writer in here. I was a little disappointed that we couldn't find anybody for what we were willing to pay and for the hours. But I think this is a great idea. We can combine it with another position that's already here. It would be, you know, more palatable to somebody that's looking for a full-time position that had some of those qualifications. Because going forward, we're really, really going to need to have a grant writer that can help us.
Right. And I know we've looked for a grant writer. You know, we've explored the opportunity to share services with surrounding towns, but then you get into a competitive situation over money, which just won't work. So I think we take the time and do that right. So.
You'll note that I just scrolled back up to the budget top. And if you look at the line item 10, Grant Writer in HR was the wish, the hope last year. And that was a 19-hour position at $35 an hour. So. What other specific questions do folks have? I can come out of the budget so I can see if people are raising hands or.
Well, let's start with Don, because this is the first you've seen of it. And Veronica, this is phase two or three. I can't remember. But let's start with the Selectmen first. Do you have questions, comments?
Yeah, I spent yesterday going through the budget. I applaud you, Jim. There's a lot of work that had to go into this. But I did have a couple of questions specifically around the Police Department. Why, and I know Jay's on the Zoom meeting, right?
Yep.
And maybe more prudent to him, but there was, I received a telephone call while I was away that there was, he was looking at a number of options. And I noticed that the lieutenant was the only one that seemed to pop forward. I was wondering why it's critical to do it now and not wait until we know what the funding is going to look like.
I'm going to ask Jay to unmute if you don't mind. Wayne, is it okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Sure. I'd be happy to discuss it. I mean, it can be summed up fairly easy in just the overload of work that I have at this point relative to administrative functions here at the Police Department, not just on a, everybody can hear me?
Yeah, a little louder if you could.
I didn't see any shaking their head, so that threw me off. So, yeah, there's an excessive amount of administrative work here, Mr. Klein, that not only from the perspective of administrative help, meaning an administrative assistance help, but rather oversight assistance for law enforcement on the law enforcement end of things. From my perspective, I'm looking at policy and policy promulgation, looking at hiring all kinds of guys, looking at our policies from stem to stern. And I think we've had this conversation before relative to, you know, long-term kind of vision when you're looking at the org chart. And I think I've shared it with you before, but I can, I can kind of, yeah, I think I can just for purposes of kind of, for your edification. So there's just basically an operations lieutenant here, and what would be deemed the support services lieutenant here. That would actually take the place of the deputy and basically taking the deputy's duties, distilling them down to things that I can manage to put within the job description of lieutenant and kind of taking some of those extra duties that the deputy did at the chief's level and making it work that way. I'd be happy to go over a quick list of duties for each of those operational commanders, if that's what you would like to see, Mr. Klein. But generally speaking, the bottom line is that the level of work here at the administrative level of the department is too much for just me, and certainly enough, Mark does enough on his end. So the operational side, which would be what Lieutenant Jean Cotty does now, would remain pretty, pretty much the same as what it is. The administrative lieutenant, whoever that may be, would cover things like internal affairs, training, field training, court, overseeing our court apparatus, our investigations apparatus, you know, looking at, you know, assigning officers, follow-up investigations, overseeing directly the school resource officer, which is a significant duty in and of itself, to be honest, looking at our professional standards in general, which comprises of our training mandates, any sort of complaints and resulting need to have any sort of remedial training plans, that type of thing. Oversee our evidence room. Our evidence room was inventoried a number of years ago with a whole host of recommendations made that have been left untouched and have not been addressed. It's an issue that I grabbed the hold of immediately upon my my appointment and got with lieutenant immediately. That's something that is pressing. It needs to get done, needed to get done four years ago, to be very frank. And oversee our records division. And as you know, the release of public records, and especially in this day and age, in 2020, has taken on a little bit of a life of its own. And to have an administrator at that level that has that level of training and ability to oversee that function will keep us out of the drink as far as the releasing of public records. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at it as, you know, the chief and then the two big divisions, one that runs operations, which is the patrol end of things, case management, reporting, traffic, direction enforcement, that type of stuff over here, scheduling our people, accident investigations, all that. And then over the other side is having a support services commander or the division supervisor, however you want to entitle it, that handles all the things that I just gave you. As to why I can't wait, Mr. Klein, to be frank, it's, I'm not so sure I can sustain the level of work that's being done by myself and Lieutenant Jean Cotty much longer and and continue to maintain the level of services that we provide certainly to the community.
So Chief, just to get back to that, just for one more second, is that I'm in support of what you're trying to do. I'm in support of how you're trying to reorganize the department. My major concern right now is that if we hire somebody new into the position and we get to the point where come fall, we find that we're going to have to do major cutbacks. I don't, I really don't want to see us cutting a patrol officer. And at the same time, I don't want to see us have to cut somebody that we just hired for that position. So that's my concern is to me, and I'll go back to Jim and Wayne and Veronica, is that I would prefer not to have to hire unless it's extremely critical. That's why I asked the question now until we see exactly where we are financially, once the state sets their budget.
Sure. And I can only speak to the, you know, to the need for the position. As you know, we have a couple of open patrol officer spots as well. You know, in process, I've actually got a conditional offer out there to fill one of them. And one of them, I'm in the process of putting together another process to identify another candidate. So we've got hiring going on on all three fronts. If you thought about it, I've made no movement as far as the administrative position goes. But quite honestly, I think that that's as important of a position here in the department as any other. If we're going to continue to make strides and insulate ourselves from risk and risk management kind of overall, relative to negligent hiring, negligent retention, it's critical that I maintain a level of administration, I think, that helps us put that stuff in place, Mr. Klein. And I think that that position is as important as any of the officers that I've got, you know, deployed currently in the street. Again, this is a new era in a sense, too, and I don't see my business and our profession being deregulated. If anything else, I'm looking at that bill that was just passed yesterday. And there's a whole host of unfunded mandates in there. And often, they almost all require a degree of oversight in administration, and they're not necessarily geared directly to the guy working the patrol shift. I can tell you that I would hire a person that was able to do the street work as well, to have that to be as functional and as versatile as possible to address some of your concerns. But it depends. I mean, I think we'd have to make that decision come fall, what what position we could cut that would do the least damage to operations. And certainly make that decision at that time and take any input that anybody may have. I can only say the importance of this position, I cannot underscore enough.
Don, my, I'm sorry, Jay. Don, my position on potential cuts, we're looking at the last two places I want to look is fire in police. Those would be the last ones I would even consider looking at. So I'm in support of this. It actually is a decrease in spending based on where we did the last two years. So I'm fine with moving forward with this plan.
Again, I'm in support of what Jay's trying to do. I just wanted to put it on the table that if we do go ahead with this, and it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from Jay, that it's critical that we do, that I'm in support of it, just understand that there could be things down the line.
Yeah, I mean, everything on this budget is up in the air.
I guess, weighing in on this, I agree with Dawn, and I said this last week, to hold off on hiring until we knew farther on. But certainly, I see the importance in the position. I was just looking at as far as budget before Jim came up with version 15 or whatever it is. But anyway, just to hold off for a little bit, and I hadn't thought about the layoff part of it. So if we're hiring for a new position and we're not going to lay off that position, should that be where we need to go in the fall? Where are we looking for layoffs?
Well, I don't call them layoffs right now. And this goes back to the land use and the grant writer. No one's getting laid off or just not hiring. And that's the first place professionally that I would recommend, no matter what company I worked for, is not fill open positions. It's what I'm going through with my regular job right now. We're not laying anybody off, but we're not hiring anybody in the open position. So that's.
Would we not adopt that same idea? We talked about this last week, Wayne. Why would we adopt that same idea with this position? It's not filled right now. And you just said you're not filling positions that are vacant.
And I'm listening to our chief as this is a critical piece. So, and I think we have to take that case by case. I don't see land use coordinator as a critical piece for day-to-day operation.
I would, I agree with you on that, even though I'm in support of a land use coordinator.
No, I know.
Are missing a conservation administrator and a high-level administrator. So if we are not filling based on attrition right now, the pretty much, the land use office is bare bones. We have the administrator for planning and CBA, and we have the conservation agent.
Yeah.
We're pretty, I mean, there are vacant positions right now in other places.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at, this is a phased approach. So phase one is, all right, let's not fill open positions. Phase two is if there are open positions that are critical, like I think we, I think the three of us agree that this one is pretty important, as Jay stated. I think we, we need to look at that as a secondary piece of the decision-making.
I'm in agreement with you, Wayne. I think we need to do it by a case-by-case basis going forward until we have a better idea of what our funding is going to be. Again, going back, you know, I, I think what Jay's trying to do, I'm in support of. If he's, if he's telling me that that's critical for his operations, then going forward, you know, I'll support it. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that if funding doesn't come through and we have to cut somewhere, I don't want to see us having to cut in jobs that we just hired.
No, I don't want to do that either. But it's a big unknown right now.
It is.
What other questions you have, Don?
Jim, I went through the budget and not being able to ask questions. And I'm sorry, but I did not get a chance to look at the YouTube video from last week's meeting, but I will later today. But from what I could see, I'm in support of what you did. And if I, my understanding, I did have a question about the, I believe he was like 92 out of whack. And I guess from my understanding and what I see here in the budget, you got that corrected, correct?
Yeah, those are the things we were just going over with Wayne in the beginning, the 10,000 out of the Town Administrator Education Training Line, 45 land use, 22 insurance load for the land use, two months, roughly 10 grand of the lieutenant position, given the time it would take to actually onboard somebody. Let me do my math here quick. So it's 57, it's roughly 80 right there. There was 5,000 in the Treasurers Office as well, when she drilled down a little bit to determine what it was going to cost to bring on the additional module for time and attendance. We had been carrying a number, and she's able to get it in at five grand less than that. So that. a number and she's able to get it in at five grand less than that. So that gets us to the, the roughly 92, 93 we're out.
And, and I understand you met with finance last week and they're on board with this?
Uh, I won't speak for them. I, you know, I know that the, the majority of the discussion we had on the common last week with finance was around the police department. Um, you know, we had additional conversation around other parts of the budget, but I think they somebody's ringing.
Yeah, that's why I have my house phone.
Okay. I think I've heard a landline ring in five years. So I, again, I defer to the members of the finance committee that are here as to what their, their thoughts were from the other night.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till we hear from Veronica first, then we'll, we'll, we'll go to them next. That's the second part of the comment period. If that's okay with you, Don.
Sure.
Okay. Is that it, Don?
That's it for me.
Okay, Veronica, you're up.
Um, I think I asked my, I think all the questions got answered last week. It's just what we just talked about. So.
Excellent. Um, so if you want to unmute the finance committee?
Before I go on.
Oh, sure.
Let's say I reserve the right when we are talking about the article on, um, capital planning to bring the budget back up.
Absolutely.
As depending on what happens there, I am going to have some questions that are budget related.
Yep, that's fine.
Mark Hesse is on the call and perhaps you will too.
Okay. I'm going to try to figure out how to unmute people. You know what?
Can you hear me, Jim? It's Mark Hesse.
Yes, I can.
I just unmuted myself.
Oh, even better.
I'm going to mute till I have something to say though.
All right. Who am I missing? That's finance Geraldine. I gotta unmute Geraldine. So let's see, ask Geraldine to unmute. Here, then I think if you hit the, you click the little microphone there, it should free you up.
While, while she's doing that, Steve, why don't you start?
Uh, yeah, I had an opportunity, you know, last week to meet with the chief and just to, um, kind of reiterate what he was saying, whatever he was talking about. He always very impressed by the um, direction that, you know, he's taking in the police department with, uh, you know, adding that support staff. And after listening to him and hearing the challenges that he's having, you know, I, I agree that, you know, and obviously the board of selectmen agree that that's a position that, that is needed. You know, I didn't really realize what it was needed until, you know, that, uh, that meeting last week. So I think it's going to be money well spent. And if, if and when something does happen in the, uh, in the fall, I would agree with, you know, Wayne that, you know, the last thing I would want to, you know, cut from is anywhere from, you know, anywhere from public safety. I think that's, that, you know, that's where we have to be. We have to be spending the money right now if it's needed. As for just the budget and looking over, I did have a question into Jim or whomever. I was looking at, um, legal, and I know we've made some transfers over the past few weeks. And I noticed it was 55,000, um, that's budgeted in there. Are we under budgeting that line item? Are we gonna, you know, is that gonna, do you anticipate that going higher? Or, you know, you just came in balanced right now for that 90, but you know, I know there's some things out there and just want to make sure that we're just not under budgeting.
Sure. Um, I, I think something that's been instructive, talking about legal, and we had a brief discussion about this at the meeting last Tuesday night. Just the, the clarification for folks to understand that we have town council and then we have insurance council. So with insurance council, you know, we pay an insurance policy. If there's legal action that comes up, uh, where somebody takes an action against the town, or we have to take an action against somebody, um, we have, we have legal counsel assigned to us through the insurer. So, you know, if we're sued by somebody, we pay a $10,000 deductible or 5,000, depending on the type of claim. And the rest is covered through the insurance company. So when, when people think we have some lawsuits that are hanging out there, and what is that going to do in terms of impacting the budget? In terms of the legal line, it doesn't have any impact at all. So we can put that aside. However, we did change the way we, um, we receive legal services about a year and a half ago now. And we have contracted with a firm that we have a, a stipend or retainer, a monthly fee. It's roughly $3,500 a month that we pay and we get general town council services. So if you have a question about a bylaw or what are you throwing, Steve?
Dog. Dog was about to, dog was about to come quick.
If we have, um, you know, general zoning question or a bylaw question, or if, you know, if the chief has an issue with, you know, enforcement on, you know, parking or trespassing, those types of services are covered within the retainer. Anything that is litigation related or labor related is outside the retainer and we pay on billable hours. I think over the last year, we've kind of felt our way through how this is going to work. And it's far more expensive to pick up and speak to labor council than it is to obviously be able to call and have the meter not be running. Um, we've got a couple of issues that have spiked this year that have driven that. Um, I don't see any right now on the horizon. There's no guarantee that something won't pop next year. But for a community the size of Townsend with the employee number, um, the, the employment base that we have and the size of our budget, we shouldn't be very far north of $50,000 on legal. When you look at other communities where a, a standard might be. So I think it's been very much an anomaly that we've had this past year with 35,000 over the appropriation. Um, I can tell you that there are two specific instances that are very narrowly defined that account for north of 20 of that. Um, that weren't contemplated when budget was being put together last year. So short answer, is there any guarantee? Absolutely not, that this is going to be a good number, but the data supports this being where we should be on a, on a normal year.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're just not undercutting ourselves and then, you know, anticipating. And then obviously, you know, if we don't go over that amount, that's just money that we can, that we can take. And I did notice there was a note that was on to the side of that, you know, that.
Increase, question mark?
Yeah.
Right.
So I just wanted, you know, and, and I just looked, so, you know, I'd rather be, if we budgeted higher and then came in lower, you know, great. You know, we, everything's working out, but you know, we have some, we've had some transfers going through. And obviously I know why, you know, you just, you just spoke to it. And, you know, where everything is so tight and you just had to do all this cutting just to get it to, which was a great job to, to, to balance. But it could easily go the other way.
It, it, it could. And, and again, that, that calls for reemphasizing that this is as good a budget as we're going to get with what we know right now. Um, you know, if we, if we see ourselves in December before the state passes their budget, where we have a, a more clear view of what our finances are, and we see that we've blown through, you know, 30 of 35,000, you know, 30 of 55,000 in legal in December, then that becomes part of the calculus at that point. We start talking about that among other lines. But right now, uh, again, for a community our size, we shouldn't be doing much north of 50 grand on a, a normal year. And it's, it, it had run substantially less than that. If you look back probably two years ago and then three years before that. And I think everybody that's on the screen can piece together what the landscape has been um, over the last, you know, not two years ago, but three years prior to that. Um, and there are a lot of contentious issues that really chewed up a lot of legal.
Um, Geraldine, how about you?
Well, all right. I was in that meeting last week, so I'm just trying to catch up with what everybody has been saying. Thank you.
Um, I don't know if Andrea's on. I don't see.
She, I see an Andrea down there. I'm a, I don't know how your screen's laid out, but I, I do see an Andrea.
I see a participant. Yep. Um, so I don't know if she's, she's got anything to add?
I don't see any microphone. Blocked or not blocked next to her either, though.
It was.
There she is.
It's unblocked.
Andrea, are you there? Negative.
I apologize. Is Mark part of the finance committee?
Mark is, Mark's hanging out there for the capital planning discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know if I was missing somebody on the committee I didn't know about. So if that's all the questions on the budget, I, I'd like to take a motion to, uh, approve the fiscal 21 budget to present to town meeting. So can I get a motion, please?
Can I say something before I make the motion?
Yes.
I would like to wait until after we discuss capital planning, because I have questions related to capital planning on this budget, which may or may not be, you know, uh, an issue, but I, I would want to wait until then.
Okay. Jim, how do we, how should we handle?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can park the budget for now, move into the warrant. Inside the warrant is where the capital article that Veronica's referencing lives. So I think we'll, we'll, we'll get to where we're trying to get. We'll just go around, around the barn a little bit and do the warrant first.
Okay. Um, just a question about that, just because Don wasn't here last week. If you can remind us of the timing requirements for the votes?
Yep. The, um, the special town meeting, we separated out to a standalone document and you voted that last Tuesday night. And it was posted. So the special town meeting is posted. There was a 14-day window under the law to post for a special. So we met that requirement under the law. For the annual town meeting, it's a seven-day requirement. So that is required to be posted by this Saturday morning. So this Friday. So the expectation was we would talk through the warrant and it's short. There are 10 articles on it. We would talk through the, um, the warrant this evening and all things considered, approve the warrant and I can have, um, the constable come in and get that posted as well.
Okay. All right. So, um, I'll table the vote on the budget for now, um, and move on to the, the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Excellent. So Jim. I want to go to screen sharing and put the warrant up. And Veronica, you will be pleased that this is just version three. There's not 15 versions of this. All right. So. All right. So what we have here is a draft, as you see from the, the watermark of the special town, excuse me, the annual town meeting warrant. And first things first, article one is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board to appoint all officers unless other provisions are made by mass general law, town charter of vote of the town, the usual and customary. Kathy, are you on? I, I saw Steve and Kathy Spoffer there. I don't know if Kathy was still there if she wanted to speak to this.
Kathy's not here right this moment.
Okay, Steve.
My voice has dropped. If that's, that's, I'm not her.
Article two, usual and customary revolving fund articles. This again is a, a standard that we see every year. The things that you see and highlight in the first revolving fund and solid waste. It currently is just recycling, board of health, collection of recyclables, operating costs associated with recycling. There's been a discussion since last town meeting about adding and solid waste, so they can use the, the revenue they receive for the purple bags, so-called, and cycle that through the revolving fund and get it right back out to use instead of it disappearing into the general fund. So I don't have an official vote of the board of health on this. I've had emails requesting it, referencing discussions with council. Um, so I've got it in there highlighted in case it in fact needs to be, but unless and until they say that's their, their wish going forward, it's nothing more than just some extra words in highlight.
Jim, didn't they have a meeting last night?
They did, and a number of things were taken up. This was not one of them.
Really?
Or, or let me even say it this way. I spent a lot of time with border health issues this morning from meeting last night, and this was not one of the things we dealt with. So it, it may be that it was taken up, but it just didn't rise to the level anyone's concerned this morning.
I'll bear wit, I'll bear witness to that.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question about that? This is more a process question. Can you change the name of a revolving fund simply by putting and solid waste in there? Or does there have to be some other way to do it? Or was it the vote of the board of health that would do that?
If, if town meeting votes to call it recycling, solid waste and unicorns, then that's what it would be called. Town meeting ultimately will name the fund.
And doing it this way is fine.
Correct. But because this is a board of health fund, it would be allowable for anybody on the floor to make a motion to change it, but it would be most appropriate for it to be coming from the board of health. So we get through the usual and customary revolving funds. We get to the operating budget. And we passed on that. I've added a couple of tables into the document here that I'll have up online with the, uh, basically just five-year expense table, just showing by municipal services, education, benefits. I mean, basically see municipal services spiked a little bit and is starting to come back down. Education continues to climb. Benefits has dipped. Um, debt service, both the non-exempt and exempt are relatively flat. Enterprises jumped up a teeny bit. Basically total expenses have climbed and it's, it's largely driven by education, which we'll see in another page here. When you get down to revenue percentages by fund and dollars by fund, you see property tax is a lion's share of revenue at 79%. State aid is 7%, local receipts, 7%, enterprise special revenue funds, 5%, other available funds is 2%. When you look at the dollars down below, property tax accounts for 19 and a half million dollars. State aid, a million seven, local receipts, a million eight, million two and change for enterprise and 560 for other available.
The question.
Yes, please.
Um, where does ambulance receipts fit in, in that go back to your other charts?
Yep. Ambulance receipts would be coming in as other available funds. So that slice and I, I can go back to the budget. I can go back to the budget sheet, the Excel sheet and go to the tab for, um, revenue projections and show that in a little bit more detail if you'd like in a moment.
Um, well, we'll see. Okay. That's just what, and local receipts are?
Local receipts are things like building permit fees. Um, again, we'll, we'll spend a, a minute on the, the other tab. It might as, might as well do it now because it'll be easier to look.
Yeah, that's going to affect the capital for ambulance, I think. If, if what I'm thinking you're saying is true, that that money would not become the ambulance fund money, or am I incorrect?
Well, let's, let's look at the, does everybody see the spreadsheet again?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Oh, let me figure out how to get back. Okay, so I gotta.
Is that a true statement though, Jim, or?
Is everybody there still?
We're still on the, the graphics.
All right. I.
Can you unshare your screen and then click on the Excel spreadsheet and share your screen again?
Yeah, I'm trying to get myself back into the meeting first because I, I think I bailed on you.
If you have the little blue, um, the little blue icon that, that looks like a projector, if you click on that, maybe it'll put you so you can see the meeting again.
That's the restore. Return to meeting. That seems like a logical place, but that's not working. Let's see. I'm glad to hear you're all still there.
And we can see you.
Oh, you can.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You just can't see us.
That's good to know.
I think you have to hit that blue icon, the blue zoom icon, find it somewhere on your screen.
Yeah.
Down a page.
I'm hitting it and it just disappeared on me again. So let's see. Oh, my Lord. All right. So I see that. I see that. Doesn't need joining. Go back into that. If I click in here. In progress. Government inaction, folks. Now I see everybody. How to get this?
Well, if you can't get there, Jim, just talk to it, I'm looking at my, my spreadsheet from the email, so.
Yeah, well, just see here. I wish that I could get. Um, now I can open it up and talk through it. So in revenue projections, you have broad categories, property tax levy, we talked about, that's nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. State aid is being carried level or flat from last year, a million seven and change. Specifically, your question Veronica about local receipts, you would find things like motor vehicle tax, meals tax, licenses and permit fees, pilots, rentals, you know, we have a cell tower site that we get rental payment, not thirty-two thousand dollars a year on. Fines and forfeits, investment income, and then there's a miscellaneous recurring for roughly five thousand dollars that I could drill down on for you if you needed. Next, you have enterprise funds, which is limited to just the water department. You then get into the other available funds, other real will funds are the receipts reserved account for a water project that we did. Predates my involvement, then you have ambulance receipts reserved. Then recreation receipts reserved, peg access receipts reserved, and then septic title five loan. Again, that was a program that was done prior to my involvement where we have a small loan that we continue to pay down. And there were receipts in hand for that. So Mark, I think your question was going to be the ambulance receipts reserved as might relate to capital, is that right?
Yes.
So right now, the history over the past several years has been four hundred and, four hundred and twenty-five, actually, I can even put that up broader, I mean, I had some of these cells. So in fiscal eighteen, ambulance receipts reserved supporting the operating budget was three hundred thousand dollars. And then in fiscal nineteen, the chief came forward with a plan to bring on three additional firefighter medics, and he was able to carve some of the expense out of his budget. And the expectation was that the budget would pick up, the operating budget would pick up the balance and the benefit load for the three was brought into the brought into the budget through ambulance receipts reserved at four fifty for twenty nineteen and four seventy-five at twenty, for twenty twenty, and it's being carried projected again at the same four seventy-five as last year, going forward into twenty twenty-one. He brings, I, I think Lori's last report was about, and Don, you may know this because I know you've spent some time talking to Lori with it on the issue. About six hundred and fifty thousand in annually. So the four seventy-five in support of the ambulance operations that'd leave the delta for the debt service on ambulance.
So I.
Mark? Yeah, I, I guess what, what we had recommended was they're looking for ALS equipment, cardiac monitor, they were also looking to replace the ambulance. My, my real question is, if we defer this till the next town meeting and you guys still need that money, can you take that, is that what happens? Not you guys, I mean, does that go towards balancing the budget, or is this actually their money?
Well, that is, is you, there is everybody, right?
Right, no, no, I did.
I guess we start, we start with that being the there.
Yeah.
The, the answer is, if the budget as presented, which contemplates, again, using four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from ambulance receipts reserved to support the ambulance service portion of the operating budget is passed. That four seventy-five is encumbered, it's tied to the budget, it is not available for any other purpose.
Okay, alright.
And that's, that, the same as last year.
Yeah. So, Mark, this is, this is Don, the, the amount of money that will remain in the ambulance reserve receipt account is carried forward for future capital needs, so he has capital plans, which we, we've discussed already going forward, and that, some of that money is used to fund those capital needs. So this is a, this is just a portion of the funds that come in. He, there's an agreement to fund a portion of the budget through that ambulance account. And then the rest stays in the account and accumulates and is there for future capital. Okay, alright.
So can I ask a question on this?
Yep.
I'm looking at the other available funds of five hundred sixty thousand. Um, I don't know if the numbers got reversed, I thought you said that six hundred fifty came in on. So is that all, is other available funds, all ambulance receipts?
No, it is not, it's, it's the water receipts, ambulance receipts reserved, recreation receipts reserved, peg access receipts reserved, and title five loan receipts reserved. So other available funds are comprised of those six, those six topics. And peg access is actually significantly reduced this year because, as you know, we've transitioned to the nonprofit, so we contemplate having Hartley on our side of the books for about two months before he's absorbed into the nonprofit, so he appears in the budget for two months of expense and then the two months of revenue appears under the other available funds peg access receipts reserved.
I guess my concern is, and maybe Don or the finance committee could talk about this, my concern is that we, we'd be able to replace the emergency equipment when we need to replace it. And I guess my understanding was that ambulance receipts, the monies that come in when the ambulance goes out and ensure, you know, that these receipts are used specifically for that.
Not exclusively, they, they are used for that, but not exclusively, they have been used to support the ambulance operations for, well before I've been around, I haven't looked back to see when because it's a fairly usual and customary thing that you have an enterprise that generates a revenue source that is used to offset the expense for performing that service.
So Veronica, just, just the clarification. That reserve account was set up in two thousand, I believe it was two thousand eight. And it was an agreement with the then finance committee to take a portion of that for the operating expenses, so that's always been the case. The amount changes from year to year with, um, with an agreement between the fire chief, the town administrator and the finance committee.
I can tell you Veronica, that I just texted Lori, the town accountant, while we're talking and asked her what the balance was as we sit. The ambulance receipt reserved right now sits at just north of seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. So if the budget passes and four seventy-five supports the operation of the ambulance service, that leaves two thirty-four for capital. And the reason it's set out as its own fund is it, it continues to replenish itself, so the whole idea, when the chief came forward and made his, his pitch to the select board two years ago now to increase staffing was with more staff and staff and a higher qualification, all at the medic level. Each time we run, we are reimbursed at a higher rate, so it actually only provides a greater degree of service to the community, but it generates more revenue. So the justification was, it's going to cost us more to do it, but we're going to bring in more, so the revenue we bring in can be used to offset the increase in, in the cost of the new service. So to, to Don's point, it's not exclusive to the purchase of capital, but it includes, it's inclusive of the purchase of capital.
Okay. Any other questions, Adam, can we go back to the warrant?
I, if I could, if we're still going to stay on capital for a second, what would happen, what's going to happen with like the vehicle leases for the, for the police comes, for the vehicles? Is that?
Right now, I mean.
Off the board, or?
Nope, 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 I, I think I, I think there's been, there's been a little bit of, of flaming that I will take full responsibility for on, on capital and people's belief that, that all the good work that capital, it's funny, I'm staring at you, Mark, on my screen, but I know that I'm really not.
That's fine, I understand, you know, and I know where you're going with this, but it was one of our recommendations.
Sure.
I suppose we, it's something we recommend every year, but it happens no matter what anyways, am I, am I?
Right, right, so, and I was going to go to that, when we get to.
I just wanted to make sure of that, Jim, that's.
When we get to article, when we get the article on the capital plan proper, you know, we'll be able to go over that, but there, there are things that you propose, and then there's a column that says where the funding is going to come from. For instance, you propose, you know, ponies and piñatas, and the funding is coming from the ponies and piñatas department budget. So it's, it's in the budget, it's accounted for, that's your cruisers. So you propose, you know, leasing a cruiser for X dollars for the year, it's in the police budget, and that shows in your capital plan. In a different way, you propose, you know, purchasing, uh, you know, an expensive piece of highway equipment, and the funding source is listed as debt exclusion. That obviously doesn't exist in the budget, that would be something that would be subject to a vote of town meeting to determine whether or not they want to raise the taxes to purchase that piece of equipment. The amount, you know, consistent with the debt. So the things that are in your plan that show the funding source as budget exists and will exist regardless. Things that show in your capital plan that are from capital, from the capital stabilization account proper, you know, you're going to buy a widget and you've got, you know, twenty-seven cents in the capital account, you've identified those two things as being connected. That gets funded. The concern that the town accountant had expressed that I had shared that has, I think, caused this, this, this flare up is entering into new leases on equipment when we don't know what, you know, this year's budget is going to look like, but the next several years. You know, it is, is projecting a, a solid three years before they're expected to stabilize based on everything that's happened with COVID over the last couple of months. So she's only saying, and I support what she's saying, before entering into new long-term obligations, annual obligations, you know, if you, if you're, if you're looking at, uh, you know, the parking lot at your workplace and there are five, you know, five percent or 10% fewer cars, you know, today than there were yesterday. You're probably not going to buy a car or lease a new car tomorrow. That's all she's saying.
Okay, yeah, alright, good, I just wanted to make sure I didn't, I kind of thought that was the way that I wanted to make sure that things like. Alright, thank you.
And nobody's getting ponies and piñatas either, that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So should I share back to the warrant, or do you want to talk more about other available funds, Veronica?
Well, when we get to the warrant article for the capital plan, I do want to go through everything that was recommended by the committee.
Absolutely, so let's go back to the warrant, if I can figure this out, so dropping everything. So we have share, do you all see the warrant again?
Yes.
Amen. So we get down. Uh, so there, the, the, the expense side, so you're seeing education, thirteen point nine eight five, so fourteen million or roughly fifty-six percent of our local budget goes to education. Municipal services, so the general government is seven point one million, so twenty-nine percent. And then you see everything else broken out there, you know, debt is two hundred and sixty thousand. You know, we're looking at sub-two percent as a percentage of overall budget, which is really outstanding. Water enterprise comes in at just under a million, so that's reflective of four percent of the total. So that, those are just for people that like to see it graphically represented. Article four, again, usual and customary, fix the salary and compensation of elected officers. It's nearly exclusively setting the town clerk's budgeted salary. So in the budget, there's an amount that's in there when the budget gets passed that exists, she can't receive it unless this is, this article is acted on under chapter forty-eight, section one oh eight. Again, you see that every year in the budget, excuse me, the warrant. Article five, um, in the earlier iteration of this warrant, you would have seen a five, a five A and a five B. There were some discussions still between the Board of Water Commissioners, the interim superintendent and myself regarding the amount of inter-municipal expenses, you see in article five, the second number that's highlighted is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. As of the Board of Water Commissioners meeting last night, they unanimously voted to adopt the figure that I had presented, which is this number. So I, I just wanted to give a, a public nod of appreciation for Rebecca McEnroe for having put the, the effort into, to go line by line with me and some of the, the more detailed stuff in the spreadsheet that we were looking at a bit ago. For those that have that document, there, there are tabs for water budget and enterprise fund, inside of which a lot of, you know, the mechanics of this agreement are worked out, so the article five then stands for the proposition that the total water budget is one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three thirty-eight and fifty-nine cents, of which two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one eighty and seventy-two cents is backcharged. You know, the, the, the water department will pay the general fund budget for expenses that are theirs that we pay. Health insurance, so they have four employees that we know will be on health insurance, we know what those costs are, so there's a bill, it's roughly seventy-five grand. Property liability insurance, automobile insurance, retirement assessment, so there are a number of, of charges that we pay in the budget and they get back charged for, so that's what that reflects. Article six is coming from the Board of Water Commissioners, they did a temporary borrowing or a bond anticipation note when they were working on the Main Street water main replacement project, so this is to pay that ban, that bond anticipation note off, now that they're rolling it into permanent financing. Next, we get into article seven, which is capital, so this one is the standard language that appears and it would usually follow a table, and that table is something that will need to be added between now and Friday when this gets posted. So it's to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow, a transfer from available funds in the treasury of the sum or sums of blank for the purpose of funding the twenty-one capital plan as voted by the capital planning committee as detailed below. So I would look to, to you, Mark, I guess first as the, as the seated chair and acknowledge Veronica having been correct and, and me incorrect, because I had been presuming that Don was the chair, because he was the one that I was communicating with, so. Looking to you, Mark, if you wanted to just spend a minute talking about what it is that you all, you all voted to put forth.
Um, I'm sorry, I just got back, I had to take a quick break here, um. I think my biggest concern maybe, uh, be things like the joint fire police upgrade replacement. Is, is that a real public safety issue, is this something we should not proceed with, I know it's the last year of, I think, a three or four year project. And just, you know, had concerns about that, wanted to make sure that it wasn't an immediate need, along with the, I am concerned with the loader though for the highway department. Also, they've got some pretty, it's in pretty bad shape, um, these guys do a good job. It, it's just something to think about, and I totally understand what we're trying to do with the budget and defer things for a while. Just voicing my concern that way. Just voicing my concern that way.
Sure, and and I want to be, I kind of want to put a finer point on it too, that oftentimes in in business and and more often even in government, capital is deferred period without much thought.
Yeah, I know.
Just, yeah, we're not, you know, that 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 piece of equipment is in a garage two miles down the road, and I never see it, so it's not on my radar screen, or those pipes are underground and, you know, as long as I turn the faucet, water comes out, I'm not going to think about it. I don't want people to believe that that's what's taking place here. I think this is really a matter of timing.
Right.
This isn't defer full stop. This is, you know, I think, a considered opinion to just things that are going to obligate us for multiple years that we're not currently obligated for, things that are going to obligate us for multiple years. We should just hit the pause button between now and the fall when we know a little more clearly what we're looking at.
Right.
Things that things that are outright purchases from the capital stabilization fund, amen, those should happen. Things that are within the operating budget, those should happen, but anything that's, you know, reflective of going going on the hook for a number of years into the future just should be paused and and thought about.
Right, and I just, I wanted to that, you know, like the police, the police cruisers, things like that were covered, and apparently they are. But just express my concern about like the the radio, um, the the joint police fire radio upgrade, the microwave link to pepperol. You know, we're still going to be safe, just like the chief was talking about his offices, so. That was basically what I wanted to come across with.
Yep, and and Mark, I think the um, there's a there's a piece that you're you're speaking about there that we can spend just a minute elaborating on. When when Townsend in goodness, November of 16 first had a public a public meeting about the prospect of regionalizing with Nishoba Regional Dispatch. There were some very specific parts of that discussion, and there there are minutes from the meeting and and videos where it was talked about, um, we're looking to increase the the reliability of service. We're looking to do a better job for the taxpayers in Townsend. Oh, by the way, there's also going to be a resulting cost savings by doing this. I I think the chief at the time, Chief Eaton and Chief Boynton, who's still with us, did a really good job of driving home the point that it was about service first and not about savings. But having said that, but having said that, they're very quick to say, and oh, by the way, we have a, you know, a need to upgrade some some in town infrastructure. And whereas this is going to result in a savings of, you know, 175 or 200,000 dollars a year, really like that that money not just disappear back into the general fund. And we'd like a commitment that we're going to be able to have that available to us. And between that meeting and several Board of Selectmen meetings and ultimately before the first town meeting after the transition took place, it was determined to be a three year plan of 175,000 a year.
Correct.
We've we've met that three years. We're now into the fourth, and I know that there's still work to be done. I won't profess to know in detail what a microwave to pepperol means. I could fake it, but I won't. Um, suffice it to say, there are still needs.
It was just my understanding that it was the last to complete project, so it would be a shame to to not fund it, but I totally understand what the town's going through financially, I really.
Well, and and here's, I'm embarrassed to say that I don't have with me, and I'm I'm not in my office. I don't have with me the actual voted capital plan that you put forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I could, I could hit pause and 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 run back to the office quickly and.
No, that's fine, that's.
Drag it out. Do you do you have it in front of you or available to you?
I do, yes.
Maybe just, maybe just go down for all this to run the the item and the the funding source that's being recommended, because we may be able to to recognize that we're we're in better shape than we think.
Right, well, the cemetery and parks. I'm sorry?
I just wanted to clarify something about the 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 issue we're talking about, the microwave link to to pepperol. We're actually asking that that get amended, and we no longer need the microwave length to pepper, but rather a tower replacement on Bayberry.
You know, chief, I think you're correct. I remember that, and it's just not on my list, but it's still for $65,000, I believe.
Correct, yeah, we, and again, you know, total spitball figure relative to what it would cost to replace a tower. That tower has exceeded its usable life by a significant amount. We've been, last couple of years as part of this project, we've had preventative maintenance checks on all of the towers in 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 town. You know, it is, it's a pretty significant endeavor, and we have been notified that that has exceeded its its life use, and it it does need to be upgraded. So we're actually asking that the the microwave link, which had been on there for quite some time, or had already been on the paper plan, be amended instead of doing that to replace the tower on Bayberry, which is our.
I I remember that amendment. It's not on my list, though, but I remember that now. But if I start at the top, again, the cemetery and parks, they wanted a dump truck. I had a free cash. I don't know why we come up with that, but we were going to get $40,000 and then $10,000 out of their own funds. This is something I'm sure that can be passed by at least temporarily. But then I had the fire EMS department ALS equipment replacement cardiac monitor, EZOPD, et cetera, for 64,450. That was going to come out of the ambulance receipt account.
Yep.
Under that, again, fire EMS department, replace ambulance two, the first payment on a three year lease. That was 103,160. Again, that would go beyond, that would go off in three years, so.
But that's for an ambulance that you already have, that's that's the payment?
That's the, that's an existing lease that we have?
I believe so.
I thought it was the first payment on a three year lease.
That's what I'm looking at.
And so.
Yeah, now that I think of it, Veronica, you're right. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, all right. And then the forestry, replace the forestry one, 1995 third request. We were going to take 140,500 out of the capital stabilization fund and then do a capital exclusion for 75,104.
This is a no.
I'm sorry?
I would say that we wouldn't do that because.
No, I I I agree with you, Veronica, on that. I do.
Can I, on on that one?
Yeah.
The the capital exclusion is that amount of money that Jim, I think Laurie talked to you about this, this money that we got back on something, and I forget off the top of my head, and I don't have my notes in front of me.
It was a it was a refunding.
That's it.
So there is, there is another available fund that could be applied instead of the capital exclusion on that.
I can agree with that myself personally. I don't know who else is on the capital board that's on this call, but I think Veronica, did you say you felt the same way?
I I thought that if it was an ex, a debt exclusion, we should not do the forestry.
Well, actually, I thought it's a debt exclusion also, but if we have to have money, you know, I I I don't know really.
I thought that the 140,500 from the capital stabilization fund on that came out of the bond refund, and that we had to go out for that exclusion for that.
That's, that was my understanding too at the time.
Yeah, I I can, my recollection from having spoken to Laurie about this, and it's been a little bit, so I'll I'll defer, is the 140 was actually cash in the capital stabilization balance. At the balance of the 75,104 was going to be not a debt exclusion, but a capital exclusion, which is just a one year.
Right, it was a one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. I think you're right, Jim. Yeah, that does, it does ring a bell there.
I can check with Laurie right now, actually.
I remember that, Ronnie, do you?
Our capital stabilization fund had only about 266 K in it.
Correct, and if you add up.
This forestry was an additional fund that Laurie found from the bond repayment.
For the 75 or the 140?
The 140.
Really? I don't, okay.
And then the, so she was going to be able to direct the 140, I thought, into capital stabilization to allow for the purchase, provided that we could do the capital exclusion of 75 and make up.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, we got, we used most of that money, right, the 360 that was in our. We were going to pretty much deplete it, if I'm not mistaken.
The 140 came after the fact, after the discussion with Laurie. My guess, capital stabilization was going to, I think we had maybe 30,000 left. I.
Correct.
Here.
And if you add all these numbers up, use the 140 included, I think it includes that, but I could be mistaken. Either way.
Had 258,000 in capital. We added 145 from what Laurie found.
Okay, okay.
And then we added the 75 K capital exclusion.
And that was going to be an exclusion, that's correct, yeah.
We were using 435 K total, leaving us with 38,596 in the.
Okay, that 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 sounds right. That does sound right. Moving on. Like squad, the squad 207 half 12 year old refurbished. It was $5,000. We were going to take that out of the fund, out of the stabilization.
But that was contingent on replacing the forestry. If we don't.
The forest. That's right, that is correct.
Squad.
Okay, we discussed the joint radio upgrade replacement. Microwave link is actually just an upgrade.
No, I thought it was a tower replacement and.
Power replacement at Bayberry?
Right.
Correct.
And that's 65, and what was the identified funding?
65, it was.
Right, the identified source? Cap stabilization?
Exactly, yeah. The loader would have been the first payment on a five year, five year lease at 39,404. Again, I saw pictures of this thing and I feel bad for the guys, I do. All right, the leases of the police cruisers were all set, and water is what it is. That's their money.
So looking, I'm sorry, go ahead, Veronica.
Can I ask a question? Is there still money in the capital stabilization fund? Do we still have access to the ambulance reserve receipt account? Are those funds still there? As we talked about them in January, February, and March as we were doing this?
Yes, because cap stabilization cannot be touched unless town meeting touches it, and we haven't had a town meeting since then, so that that money is sitting as it was. Ambulance receipts reserved has grown since then, because receipts come in on a regular basis. The current balance, as I said a few moments ago, is 709,000 in ambulance receipts reserved. So if you take 475, that's being called for to support the ambulance service in the budget. That delta is the 284 that we referenced a few minutes ago, that would be available still, and it grows. I'm sorry?
234.
I don't know, I wrote it down, but I don't see where I wrote it, so whatever, whatever, 709 less 475 is.
34.
Okay. So are we good with that final number then?
A good statement would be that none of these are dead. We just want to figure out where we're sitting, yeah.
I I think there's a, there's a a more positive way to say that.
Yeah.
The water is alive, the cruisers are alive.
Yeah.
The fire and police 65 is alive.
What about the upgrade, the uh, radio upgrade?
Well, I've got that listed as fire and police 65,000 dollar tower upgrade. Is there another?
Yeah, there is another, the joint police radio replacement, and I think that's what was in its last year of fructation, I guess.
What's what's that amount and what's the source?
110,000.
And the source is listed as what?
Capital stabilization fund.
Okay, so that you currently have you have the water covered, cruisers covered, the two cap stabilizations for police and fire covered. The.
Replacing the ambulance too. Shouldn't that be possible, even though it's the first payment on the three year lease?
It would be, because you have that two, whatever the number is, you said, delta left in ambulance receipts reserved.
So I.
ALS equipment also for 63.
I agree with Mark, yep.
You do, so that'd be, that'd be 167 and change against the two, whatever you said, Veronica, there that balance was. And then the the um, cemetery and parks.
That was free cash.
Right, I don't know, curious where the free cash jumped into it there.
Do you remember what that was, Veronica?
Yeah, that was a discussion that we had. We were trying to give every department at least the important things that they requested. And so there were, Roger had talked to Laurie. Laurie said that there there was 40 K in free cash that could go for it. He's, instead of buying a new truck, if I remember this right.
He was going to get a used one, that's right.
Found a used one that if he had 50 K he could do. We asked if any money could come out of the cemetery account, and he offered 10 K. I guess he looked at his budget to see what was there, and Laurie said that 40 K from free cash could be used for that. And so my question is, if the free cash is still available for that, then we could do that for cemetery and parks. And so who really.
Roger about a little more, is that? I know he's got it.
So who loses is the highway department on the loader, because if we can't enter into the first payment on a five year lease, if we can't be certain that we'll have that in capital stabilization for five years, we probably should hold up on that until the fall at least. And the forestry, fire, because of the capital exclusion. Because of that, we don't have the, we aren't able to go forward on that.
I did get an email back from Laurie, Veronica, confirming that the 140,500 would be coming from the capital premium refund account. So you you're correct in that, so it was 75 and change that was being looked at as a capital exclusion.
Right. So we should be able to do everything in this round at annual town meeting, in my opinion, and I don't know if finance agrees with this, or Dawn was on the capital planning and Mark, all, you know, do we need a meeting to discuss this? But in any event, I would say everything should be able to go forward, except for the forestry and the squad for fire and the loader for highway, and to hold off on those to see where we stand in the fall.
I I I could agree to that.
Okay. All right. So does Jim, does that give you everything you need for article seven?
I I do, I do. What I'll do is is either tonight or tomorrow, first thing, I'll just put a a very simplistic spreadsheet together that shows these by by department, by item, by amount, and by source, and I'll circulate that to you, Mark, as the chair.
Yeah.
And if it reflects everything that we're hearing here, I I'm going to include the things that we've talked about as being possibly not likely, the loader, the quad, and forestry, because right now that's your voted plan. If between now and town meeting, you have a meeting and you vote to take those off, it can be amended on the floor and taken off. If you if you come up with that decision prior to this needing to be posted, it could even be taken off before the posting goes up on Friday.
Okay. Mark, this is Dawn.
Hi, Dawn.
Just so that you're aware, I can no longer vote on that because my term ended on July 1st.
That could be the same. Same could be true for me, because I don't know that I would, you know.
Well, if I understand it correctly, since we haven't, those extend if they're not filled.
Go on.
You continue to suffer service until replaced.
Yes.
The body of government.
We'll make it easy, we'll make it good.
Can we go back? Can we go back to the loader for a second? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to talk about that loader for a second. It it really is a necessary thing for that department to be able to function at all. That equipment. That equipment that they have right now is terrible.
Carolyn, I couldn't say it any better, you're right.
I, I agree Carolyn.
But, uh, I, you know, come winter, we're gonna be, if we don't do something for this department, we're gonna be sorry.
Well, I, I would recommend between now and town meeting that the finance committee go back and review that, or not. Now, the finance and the capital planning committee meet to, to go over that and see what we can do. Um, I think for just tonight, we're just putting it off as, as is, and we can, we can always revisit it and, and also look at it in budget number two.
We really should.
No, no, and that's fine. It, it's just, I mean, just for the purposes of this meeting and.
Yeah.
Town meeting, we, we gotta, we gotta put pins and things until.
Yeah.
We know more.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Jim, back to you.
All right, so we get to the next article, which is Article 8. I'm sure I don't click anything that's gonna knock me out of here again. All right. Yeah, there we go. All right, Article 8 is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to. One, enter into one or more net metering credit purchase agreements with the owners of solar photovoltaic facilities for periods up to 20 years. And two, take any actions and execute any other documents and ancillary agreements necessary, convenient, or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing. And to implement and administer such net metering credit purchase agreements. All of which agreements and documents shall be on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deemed to be in the best interest of the town. So, under the description, this agreement would result in the town saving no less than 15% off of its electricity bills for all town buildings.
Wait, is this Article 8 or?
Is that where I was, or did I skip something?
Nope, eight.
Uh, I thought that, okay, wait a minute. You switched seven and eight from the last warrant, is that correct?
Well, no, you're, you're probably looking at the pilot.
Um, Article 8. These are switched from what you sent us last week. Article 8 is what is Article 9 on here, I think? I'm confused.
I think there used to be the pilot agreement one Veronica, and that's no longer on this draft, because I was advised that it's already, it was already voted.
Last annual.
The last annual, so it doesn't.
Got it, okay, so I'm gonna cross this out from what you have sent us.
For the pilot, yep, okay. Um, so this would, um, under description, the agreement would result in the town saving no less than 15% off of its electricity bills for all town buildings. It would authorize the selectmen to enter into an agreement to purchase credits equal to 1 kilowatt hour each that are generated by the new solar farm that was built off of West Meadow Road. Each credit would offset a kilowatt hour of power consumption on the town's bills and would be sold to the town at a discounted rate, set at no less than 15% lower than. The cost of the power being offset. I guess the, the global comment on this is, this isn't town meeting entering to such a document, such an agreement. This was town meeting authorizing the select board to consider entering into such a document or a contract.
Is this, what was at the, what was the one that we just did at the, at the last time? Something different than this or the same?
This is the one that was on the floor at the last town meeting, and it was moved to be passed over.
All right, that's what I thought, so it's the same one, we just removed it, that's what I thought, okay.
Yep. So Veronica, I know you've had.
I have a lot of questions.
A lot of questions about this, and you've been, you've been doing a lot of work in the background on it, so I don't know what you're, what you're thinking.
Okay, this is what I'm thinking. I'm, I'm thinking, um, I, I don't know how many people have seen the contract and the accompanying document with it. But I, I, I guess what I'm thinking is, okay, the 15%, probably fair, you know, pretty fair. The pilot agreement, I have questions about that, um, although a pilot agreement is probably the way to go. Um, I would want to know why 2% across the board. I sent you, um, stuff Jim on this. Um, so it, it comes down to, um, what considerations were made in determining a pilot versus property taxes? And from what I read, probably a pilot is the way to go. However, there's mass general law, um, that I looked at between when I talked to. The Board of Assessors earlier today, and now, um, we got, you know, they were saying, oh, the appellate court, um, makes you pay back the taxes because they say it's a nonprofit. Uh, I, you could, I'm not sure about that, but the 2% increase across the board, um, uh, versus 2.5%. Why, um, why not? I mean, if our taxes are increased by 2.5% or more than 2.5%. Why wouldn't this agreement be tied to that? Because I see this in place of property taxes.
Sure. A couple, a couple of global comments. Um, the, the decision on whether. To move forward with a, a pilot or to pursue taxation is one that's vested with the Board of Assessors, which is why they're the ones that. Once having been authorized by town meeting to consider it, have considered it. Um, whether their judgment is good, bad, or otherwise, is not something I'm commenting on. I'm just saying that the decision was vested with them. The logic behind not doing, um, taxes and, and instead doing a pilot. While those other things you mentioned about, you know, the arguments being made at the appellate tax board about it's nonprofit, because the power's going to nonprofits and municipalities there. I mean, you, you can twist yourself up in knots there, but there's an easier, I think, clearer line as to why the pilot is generally considered better. And that's if you treat it as, as personal property, because the appellate tax board has already ruled you're not taxing them as real property. Even though it's attached to the earth, and at one point they said, once it's bolted to the earth, it's considered real estate. That's all gone by the wayside. Right now, it's personal property, and personal property is depreciated each year. So if you take that piece of, um, of hardware that's out on the field on West Meadow right now, and it has a value of X today, and you're taxing it at the tax rate. Next year, that value is gonna have decreased by its depreciation, and you're gonna be taxing them maybe at a higher rate, because we're gonna have gone up by 2.5%. But the value assigned to that personal property is gonna have decreased such that, at best, we're gonna be treading water. The reason people prefer pilots is because you fix it at a number that's equivalent to what you believe the asset is worth today, times your tax rate, and you get a fixed increase. Now, could it be better than 2%? Perhaps. I've seen them in the state when this program was first started out, and things were going gangbusters. And I've seen 12 grand a megawatt hour with a 5% escalator. You know, we're looking at 7,500 a megawatt with a 2% escalator. It has changed significantly since those wild, wild days in the beginning, so I don't know if you've got a response back from Adam when you had asked.
Not yet, I haven't.
This is a standard rate or not, but, um, there's a, there's a company that once did assessing for towns, and, um, they do assessing for a number of communities in our region. And they've actually become kind of go-to experts on this stuff. Um, and when you talk with them and ask what these things are doing out there, the 75 to 8,000, uh, a megawatt is, is the pretty standard right now. So, again, it's, it's not skin that, that the Board of Selectmen necessarily has, or anyone on staff has. It, it really does. Vest with the, the Board of Assessors, but that's kind of some of the background as to why people prefer to go with the pilot as opposed to the tax, the real estate.
So I guess my question is, because I, I did a lot of looking for, over the past week, since I asked you those questions last week, Tuesday. Um, I can't find minutes for the Board of Assessors where any deliberations were done on this, from last annual town meeting to this annual town meeting. The last minutes that are posted on the webpage are from 2017, I believe. So there's no, I know that they voted, what, Friday, um, to accept this.
I think, I think they did, yeah.
On the pilot. Did the Board of Assessors do the negotiation on the pilot?
The Board of Assessor, Board of Assessors reached out and said, this is a draft pilot agreement, can you have council look at it? Given that they are separately elected and statutorily, this is their prerogative, it was all pushed through to council. Council made edits and reviewed and put it back. In terms of the economics, you saw my email, I believe I forwarded to you earlier today, where I asked them just last week. Have you ever finalized or taken a vote on this at the 75 and 2? And I got a response back the next day that they had voted on it, as though, I think it was last Thursday, it may have been Friday, but I think Thursday. Um, that they had in fact voted on the 75 hundred per megawatt at 2%. But in terms of who negotiated it, I know that they were dealing directly with one of the representatives from Nexamp on it.
So they dealt directly with Nexamp.
Um, having, having said that, I can say that I've been being peppered by Nexamp for probably since the end of town meeting, when this all got postponed, as to whether or not. This is going forward again, because they're sitting on an amount of credits that, oh, we're talking about the pilot.
They're holding space for us. Okay, so my next concern, this is community solar, and we just did, um, so I'm mixing two things here. We, the town, just adopted a municipal vulnerability preparedness, um, plan. And, um, one of the things that we discussed was solar. Um, never was this contract brought forward. The first time I saw this contract was on Tuesday. So it was never discussed as to where, we talked about solar on buildings, or looking at how the community was going to. Jump into the renewable energy market. Um, I have a concern about a 20-year contract. I understand that you're saying it's standard, and I, but is it standard for community solar? Um, my next question is, this field is located between, and we're looking at climate change and municipal vulnerability due to climate change. Some of this solar field, if I remember correctly from my conservation and planning days, is within the floodplain. And it also lies between two brooks. Um, and so, um, so I have a concern about a 20-year time period. So I would be perfectly good with this contract with, uh, you know, five-year certain. And then a one year to get out somewhere within the next, you know, five to 20 years, if in fact that's what we wanna do. I, I am not a solar negotiator, but it seems that a 20-year contract in a field that could be. I, I'm not, you know, is it, uh, is it susceptible to, um, to, uh, extreme climate, climate events? What I would be looking for is resilience for the community from the solar standpoint. And certainly, we are not in the position today to say, oh, in five years, we're gonna do this. We haven't even talked about it. So we don't know. So to go into a solar contract makes sense. To go into a solar contract for 20 years that we're hooked into, doesn't make as much sense to me. So what I asked Adam for was, what were the ramifications? And I, I've read it, I know what I think is possible. What are the ramifications if in five to 15 years, we wanna pull out of that contract? Can we have an additional contract? Can we lower the amount of, um, electricity that we're buying from one place to go to the other? What is covered by this contract? Is it the schools as well as the town buildings, including emergency response? I mean, what is covered by this contract? These are all questions that I have.
I, I can, I can take a crack at some of them when you're.
Pardon me?
I was gonna say, I can take a crack at some of them. I was gonna start making notes, but I didn't wanna be rude and not be looking at you.
You can be rude Jim, it's okay. If you need to take notes, go for it, I do.
I'm, I'm, I trust the power of my brain, but what, what, if you've got some more there, though.
Uh, no, I'll ask my, answer what you've got in your head and then we'll go from there.
Couple, couple things. Um, regarding the MVP grant, um, I sat in on a couple of those calls, um, you're, you're aware of that. If, if I had been on a call or during one of the, the actual sessions where solar was being developed, I definitely would have chimed in. And I would have said something along the lines of this. If you are going to put solar on the roof of. Well, we wouldn't do the town hall, it's historically preserved, but if we wanted to take a piece of land out behind the, the highway barn and clear it and put in, you know, a one-megawatt solar farm. Um, we would likely be financing that for 20 years. We would not be eligible for the same economics or, um, incentives that are available to the private companies. They get an investment tax credit of 30% until the end of this current calendar year. So we would be paying a 30% premium on top of what they're paying to get it built, and then we would have prevailing wages that we would pay as well. The point I'm making is, if we were to build it or put it on one of our facilities, we would be paying significantly more, and we'll be borrowing for at least as long a term. That would then leave us with something to maintain. If the inverters go in 15 years, there's that capital. If we have it on a roof somewhere and we have roof issues or structural issues, then we have that to deal with. So from, from my calculus, and I've, I've had this conversation in innumerable meetings with innumerable boards and commissions.
In Townsend?
No, no, no. I'm, I'm, I'm offering this thought now. My calculus is, because when you said the other day to me that, under the MVP grant, we have thoughts of putting things on, on roofs or on properties that the town owns.
I, I'm thinking more in terms of parking lots, you know, to, um, similar to what you see at, uh, BOS, at the airport. You know, you put it, you, you park under it. I'm thinking more in terms of that.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Building. There may be other buildings where it would be appropriate, but they're.
Yeah, the same, the same holds true for the economics though Veronica, is you, you're going to pay a premium as a municipality. Dollar for dollar, building this as opposed to a private entity that's building it, so you're, you're carrying.
I'm gonna argue with you Jim, cause.
Please.
Do, um, public land, private, um, you, you can enter into a public lease, uh, it's public land, correct?
Yeah.
Private, the landowner being the public, that's us. And then a private company that comes in.
Yep, and if, and if you're owning the asset, you're paying prevailing wage to have that private company come in and do the job. If you're not gonna own the asset and you're, I mean, I've, I've participated in drafting RFPs for a municipality to take a landfill. And have a private concern come in and build a solar farm that the private concern is going to own. So basically, you're, you're negotiating a lease.
Right.
A lease and a purchase of power back. That has to be built under prevailing wages, because it's municipal land, and there's a municipal participant in the economics. So you're not getting away from that, that the 30, 30% investment tax credit as a municipality you're not eligible for, and you're paying prevailing wages. Now, if you want instead to say, we're gonna just give our piece of land out, and then we just wanna do the power. You can negotiate that. You're gonna see that same 15% that we're talking right now with the one that's already built on the street. Again, five years ago, seven, eight years ago, you could see 25% discount in some of these deals that are getting negotiated, because. The market was wild, there were a lot more incentives. There was a Green Communities Act incentive in addition to the investment tax credit. But right now, that market's really stiffened up, so my point globally is, you can put it on town property somewhere, but it's gonna cost you more. You're gonna borrow for the same period of time, so you're not gonna receive the same benefit that you would by negotiating a deal off somebody that's building one.
And can you address the floodplain issue?
Absolutely not. I have, I wasn't on the planning board when it was cited there, and I, I would no sooner guess whether there's gonna be a flood in 20 years, you know, down on West Meadow Road than I would have. I'm gonna get struck by lightning sitting here, I mean, I have no idea. You know, again, that, 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 that. You, you said, you said you're gonna argue with me, so I'm gonna argue a little bit with you. That seems to be a bit of a red herring to me. Because it is there right now, and if the town enters into a contract to purchase power from them, and they go underwater for some reason. That doesn't mean that we have to shut the lights off until they dry out. That means that they can't produce the power, they can't sell us the credits, we go back on the grid.
Right. Um, do we have a prospectus from them?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Do we have a prospectus from them?
Do, do, who, does who? I, I do not know, no.
For Lockbrooke Solar, there's no.
I'm sorry?
There's no. Financials, no, anything, no prospectus.
Um, that the town has? Not that I'm aware of, I, I haven't seen anything.
Provided by Nexamp or Lockbrooke Solar. I guess it's Lockbrooke Solar that we're buying from, which is a subsidiary of Nexamp.
What's the question, I'm sorry?
Do we have a prospectus?
I have the one document I sent you, which is the, uh, the Excel spreadsheet that shows an amount of power times a rate um, with escalators built in for 20 years showing the prospective savings. But in terms of a prospectus in the proper use of the word for that special purpose entity that is Lockbrook Solar over their 20-year lifespan, absolutely not. I would imagine that's proprietary and that they would not share that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a private business, so they're in it to make money. This is not a, I wouldn't be showing my books in public.
Yeah, I mean, this.
It's in the community solar document put out by the state.
I can barely hear you. I don't know if you're further from your mic or not.
Maybe I am. Let me see if I can. I asked that question because it was in, um, a document on community solar that I read by the state, put out by the state.
That says that the business, a private business should be giving you, I guess, I guess I know what prospectus means.
If I can find it, I wrote, I printed it.
I guess there I would ask you to ask those questions, Adam, because those are legal questions or what they have to defer.
Have questions out to Adam lots of them.
Okay.
Um, oh, okay. All right. So those are basically my questions. I would be happy if I knew we could, um, get out of it if we wanted.
Yeah. And I, and I didn't address that part of your, 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 your list of questions there about the 20 years. You know, one thing you asked Adam, and he apparently hasn't responded back yet, is, is this a standard that they're this length of time? And, uh, in my experience.
I didn't ask that.
I, I believe you did.
I said, what are the ramifications if the town decides in five to 15 years that going in another direction would be more beneficial to the town?
What was the first question on that email you asked him?
How does the contract line up with contracts in other towns in Massachusetts as far as net metering rates and pilot increase goes?
Okay. Well, the 20 years, something you just asked as one of your questions now, being uncomfortable with is the standard across the industry, not just in, in Massachusetts, but, um, for power purchase agreements. If you Google power purchase agreement and you look back to the inception of the financial structure that started in Southern California, probably about 20 years ago or more, um, you'll see 20 years. And that's again, a function of the financing of these assets. When they go into the marketplace to say, we would like you people with all of that money out there to give us money to build this. The people that are giving them the money to build it want to see what their rate of return is going to be. And they want to see that the, the deliverable, that the asset that's able to be generated and sold has a guaranteed revenue stream for that 20-year period. Um, so that's why you're seeing the 20 years and it, I think you'll find that it's the standard.
Okay. I, I guess for me it might be terminology, but community solar means something a little bit different. Um, and it's, and so I might not be understanding, um, what community solar is.
Okay, I, I, I think I, I can tackle that one.
That Lockbrook Solar may not be what I read as community solar.
This is not community solar. This is a private entity making money.
But, but having said that, Dwayne, it, when the Commonwealth started the solar program under the Green Communities Act in 2008, it was SREC. That's what it was called.
Yes.
Right? SREC became SREC 2, and that was all about the incentives. Then they realized, holy smokes, we've incentivized this to the point that people are covering farms and tearing down forests and it's, it's not what we really wanted. So let's put a throttle on it. So they reduced some of the incentives and then they steered it more towards, okay, we've, we've, we've created these, you know, big farms and we're covering all these businesses, but what about mom and pop shops? Or, you know, Jane and Joan dough. How can they get a piece? So they created the program called Community Solar. That doesn't mean that it's just something that the community got together and created, which is a term that's used for small neighborhood or village, um, solar farms that people all contribute to, community solar. The program in Massachusetts calls this community solar based on what they allow for the distribution of the net metering credits. It used to be that you had to give it all to private or all to government. This allows you to give some to private, some to government, and a certain percentage of it has to go to individual meters in the community and not just your community proper, but the distribution network community. So Unitil, so Pittsburgh, Lunenburg, Townsend.
Okay. Well, well, for the sake of tonight, just to keep things moving as, uh, you obviously have some outstanding questions to Adam, um, between now and town meeting that we need to work through. But I, I think we've discussed this enough to move on. If that's okay.
Jim, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask Dwayne if I can add one thing, because I just remembered from last of, uh, town meeting is that a lot of people from the, um, floor asked if there could be a copy of what the agreement would be. And I'm just remembering what that meeting was like. So I'm, I would anticipate, and it's just a side note to what Veronica is talking about, that I'm sure those same questions will come up. That's all.
And that's fine. I have no problem with that.
So Wayne, no, I asked Jim to, I said, I think it would be good if you could put together a presentation for the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Next week, 7/21, and an info sheet for the town for town meeting that explains this contract. So the Board of Selectmen, and it could be just me since I'm new to the board, and the town know what considerations were made in determining and negotiating the net metering rate and how this compares to other towns' contracts. What considerations were made in determining a pilot versus property tax and what the 2% increase versus two and a half or more per year? Uh, would, would, why it's that? Will the property taxes for the town not increase by more than 2% in a year for the next 20 years? For prof, two and a half override, we've talked about this, um. Uh, what did the Energy Committee take into account in analyzing this agreement? So I would want a statement from them beyond, yeah, we voted for 2%. And what did the Board of Ass- of, um, no, I guess I said, I don't know if I said that right, but I want an Energy Committee. It looks like they hunted. It's kind of what I'm seeing.
Yep. And, and I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. So Jim, I'll ask you to kind of put that document together for us if you, if you don't mind.
No, no, I'd, I'd love to with the proviso that there are going to be certain things that I'm not going to be able to answer because I won't speak on behalf of the elected assessors as to what their calculus was when they made decisions they made. And I won't seek to put words in the Energy Committee's mouth. I will ask them the questions you've asked. Um, if they give us a response, that, that'll be lovely. But, um, I just want to make it clear that I'm going to be limited in what I'm going to be able to put together. It's a fairly expansive.
I, I would just prepare both of those committees to talk to those points. I don't think we need it for our meeting next week, because I doubt they're going to meet between now and then. But if, if just be, we're, I mean, to Veronica's point, all we're doing is preparing for town meeting here. So let's use the time we have in between now and then and, and get that stuff ready and prepare the people to talk about what they need to talk about.
Yep. And I, I just wanted to be clear, Wayne, that I, the things that I can have control over, I will, I will spend my, my, all my waking hours putting it together. There are going to be parts that I'm not going to be able to control is the point I make.
Okay. That's, I'm, that's fine. I appreciate that. So, um, so is that good, good with you Veronica?
Yeah. And for, for Steve's comment, I, I would have the contract available and the, um, attachment for those people that would like to see it. And it would be good for them to be able to, I don't know, it's hard with town hall closed, for them to be able to pick it up, pick it up sometime because it, it takes or post online.
Well, you'll, you'll remember a week ago, a week ago tonight, I said just that Veronica, that we, we have it ready. It's scanned. But I, I was hesitant to put it online until I knew that you were going to vote a warrant that was going to include it. You've not yet voted for the warrant. So this isn't really even going before the, 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 the town meeting until you approve this warrant. If you approve it tonight, that document goes up online and people have access to every single semicolon.
Okay. All right. So let's get this article, this, the warrant done then. Please.
Moving on to the next one. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow a transfer 27-5 for the purpose of funding the assessors fiscal 21 periodic inspections and property data verification program as mandated by Mass DOR. Again, this has been a usual and customary and, um, this is the, the third party that comes in and does all of the data verification and inspections, which we're required to do.
Okay.
Article 10, the last one, to see if the town votes to transfer from free cash to some $55,000 to fund the second of three installments of the installment payment agreement in italics, uh, executed by the Board of Selectmen and former Police Chief Richard Bailey are taking action in relation there too. So you may recall that last annual town meeting, there was, um, a retirement of Chief Bailey and an installment payment agreement reached between he and the then-seeded Board of Selectmen. And this would be the second of what will be three $55,000 payments.
Okay.
And that is the entirety of the warrant.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, I'll move back to the fiscal 21 budget to get a motion on that one first. Um, can I get a motion on that, please?
Um, I move that we accept the fiscal, um, 21 budget.
As presented?
As, as written, yeah.
Okay. Could we get approved instead of accept, just because the language in the charter, I believe, uses approve?
Uh, that, that is fine with me if that's what it needs to be.
Okay. Don, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? We're good.
Um, I guess I just want to make sure that the reason I didn't want to vote on it before was because I wanted to make sure that the capital stabilization, um, was there that, you know, for, for those things and that the ambulance receipts were there.
Okay, good.
And they are.
No, thank, thank you for bringing that up. Um, and thank you, Mark, for jumping in too. So, um, all right, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
We'll just go one at a time, I guess.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Right. Next one is to approve the warrant for annual town meeting. Can I get a vote, uh, motion on that, please?
Okay, I, I move that we approve the warrant for annual town meeting as written, or while not as written, because we have to, with the addition of the capital planning article.
Correct, yes.
I mean, how would we do this? I want to make sure capital planning is in there.
Just as you just said, um, motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant with the addition of the capital plan and to be executed out of session.
So moved?
As stated, yes. Can I get a second, please?
Don Klein, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are we good?
Uh, well, my question is for capital planning, do you need the numbers in there within a certain amount of time? Because we need to sign this pretty quickly.
Um, as I stated earlier, I'm going to put the spreadsheet together either tonight or first thing in the morning. It's going to have each of the items by department, um, item amount and source. And I'm going to get that to Mark. That'll be in the warrant unless and until capital planning between now and Friday pulls off a meeting and says they want to pull a couple of things off or it'll go to the floor as is and get amended on the floor if necessary. But that'll be, that'll be the spreadsheet that'll be in there and it'll look just like last year's. If you look at last year's warrant.
Okay. Uh, can I get a vote then, please? All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Um, on to intermunicipal transfers, Jim.
Yep, we have just one, which is, um, which is a redo from last week. I got to the finance committee meeting last Thursday and had a, a document that was incorrectly constructed and this one is correctly constructed. It's seeking approval of the Board of Selectmen to transfer, um, from MIS expenses to legal expenses to some of $5,000. And this would then go to the finance committee as well.
Okay. So can I get a motion on that, please?
I, I move that we transfer 5K from.
MIS expense.
MIS expense.
To legal expense.
Legal expense.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, okay. Any other discussion or are we good?
That gets us through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Um, Board of Selectmen announcements, updates and reports. I think we can hold off on this until next week at a regular meeting unless you guys had something dire or pressing. Okay. Uh, four, three, review and sign bills payable warrant out of session. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Um, I move that we review and sign the bills payable warrant out of session.
Second. I'll second that one. Um, all those in favor?
Um, can I just ask, when do I need to do this by?
Sure, Jim, when?
Sorry, this is a process thing for, for me.
Within, within the next several days. I mean, Lori will generally have it out there.
Does she email us when it's ready or is this something that I'm supposed to?
Carolyn would usually send an email when Lori brings it up that the warrant's on the desk for your signature. So, um, you can expect an email would likely be from Carolyn more than Lori, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alls in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Could I just ask before that, do we have a next meeting at all?
Next Tuesday would be a normal, um, and we do have a couple of issues that are, that are in the file that would, would be helpful to have the meeting. So if you can, the three of you can make next Tuesday, that'd be great.
I can.
I can.
Jim, can, can we do another Zoom? Unfortunately, I found out.
Yes.
Cut back that I cannot enter your building for two weeks.
Yes. Yes, this actually worked pretty well tonight, so I'm, I'm.